I will now make my opening statement from the Eros room. Excellencies, ladies and gentlemen. It is an honour to welcome you to the 31st United Nations General Assembly Special Session on the Coronavirus Disease COVID-19, the first ever special session to address a pandemic. Today marks an overdue and much needed moment of reckoning. None of us could have imagined this time last year what was to come. The COVID-19 pandemic has disrupted life for everyone around the world. It has challenged our world in ways unlike any other crisis in the 75-year history of the United Nations. COVID-19 is first and foremost a global health crisis. But it is at the same time an economic crisis, a development crisis, a humanitarian crisis, and a human rights crisis. We face the deepest global recession since the Great Depression and the broadest collapse in incomes since 1870. The world economy has shrunk by 4.4%. Global extreme poverty is expected to rise for the first time in over 20 years. Up to 115 million people are at risk of being pushed into extreme poverty. Foreign investments have been evaporating. Trade and travel restrictions, steep declines in export earnings, tourism and remittances all put at risk the livelihoods of billions all around the world. Our global development trajectory has been hijacked. Each country is feeling the pressure, yet those that were already lagging behind took the worst hit. Ongoing humanitarian crises have worsened as a famine of unprecedented proportion threatens the poorest people in the world. We are faced with a grave risk where half of the decade of action to implement the STGs will have been spent simply getting back to where we were at the beginning of the year. Excellencies, this pandemic has disproportionately affected the most vulnerable members of our societies: women, children, the elderly, the disabled, refugees, migrants, those living in slums, and the homeless. It revealed the structural inequalities and obstacles to the full enjoyment of human rights. Lockdown measures have led to increased gender-based violence and domestic abuse of women. Many women will not be returning to the workforce as they disproportionately shoulder the burden of unpaid care and homeschooling. Young people feel frustrated as their education, community engagement, and employment opportunities are restrained. Pandemic-related disruptions in health and nutrition services could result in increased rates of child deaths from preventable causes. Digital divide between developing and developed countries, as well as between urban and rural settings, is exacerbating exclusion and inequality. In communities around the world where internet connectivity is scarce, millions of children have no access to remote learning. Already far from their homes due to conflicts, disasters, and persecution, refugees and internally displaced persons are suffering further due to the pandemic. And increases in racist discourse, hatred, stigmatization, stereotyping, and misinformation have been accompanying the pandemic. Excellencies, this hall is where nations come together, where they unite. This august body, the General Assembly, is the voice, will, and conscience of the humanity. The world is looking up to the United Nations for leadership, to step up and take demonstrable action to address the greatest challenge our world is facing today. This crisis compels us to shake up how things are done, to be bold, and to restore confidence and trust in the United Nations. No other institution is as far-reaching as mandated or as normatively better placed. The United Nations must lead on this. This General Assembly Special Session is a historic moment for member states, the United Nations, scientific community, and other stakeholders, including the civil society, to hear from each other, engage in dialogue on the multifaceted consequences of the pandemic as well as on the ways to recover better and stronger. This is not a time to point fingers. We have convened here to forge a path forward and to end the suffering of the people we serve. Since the beginning, I have been convinced that holding this special session was a test for multilateralism, defined by our collective action on the most critical issue of our time. And it is in no way the end of our joint response and recovery from the pandemic. We were not prepared for COVID-19, but we have to be prepared for the next pandemic: climate catastrophe or global recession, because a crisis of this magnitude will have to meet it when it does. Distinguished delegates, we must be able to rise to the challenge, and our response should not simply target the return to the statist coante. What we need to do is clear. First, we must start with ensuring fair and equitable access to vaccines. Providing everyone with access to COVID-19 vaccines is both the right thing to do and the smart thing to do. From a moral standpoint, we have an obligation to leave no one behind and to protect the most vulnerable. From a practical standpoint, the value of any vaccine is entirely dependent on how many people can get it. So we must strengthen political and resource mobilization for multilateral initiatives that aim towards fair and equitable distribution of COVID-19 vaccine. Secondly, we must work together to protect the most vulnerable countries that are lagging behind, most notably LDCs, LLDCs, and SIDS. We must ensure that adequate financial resources are available to achieve an inclusive and resilient recovery. We need to join forces to address the challenges of debt vulnerability and diminished fiscal space. I encourage international financial institutions and partner countries to do what they can to ease debt burdens, facilitate investment, and leverage development assistance during this crucial period. If necessary, we must pool financial resources to create investment funds. The pandemic has also highlighted that we need more investment in social and health services all around the world. We need to develop projects for social inclusion of the most vulnerable groups. We must ensure universal health coverage. While tackling the immediate consequences of the pandemic, we must also work towards the 17 Sustainable Development Goals, STGs, uphold our pledge to leave no one behind, and ensure that our recovery efforts spur on the STGs. We do not need to prioritize among these goals. Indeed, the underlying urgency of ending extreme poverty, halting climate change, protecting the oceans, or building inclusive societies is more pressing than ever. Investments towards the STGs can serve as both a means and an end towards a past post-COVID recovery. The environmental root causes must also be addressed. COVID-19 is a zoonotic infectious disease originating from animal populations being placed under severe environmental pressure. This is our last warning. We must get to the bottom of how this happened to ensure it doesn't happen again. We simply have to protect biodiversity and look towards a green recovery. And finally, we must ensure that the policies we implement to combat the pandemic do not undermine the democratic institutions that underpin the long-term health of our economies and societies. Our response to this crisis must be shaped by an uphold respect for human rights. Our policies should be universal, open, transparent, accountable, and inclusive. Promoting good governance, respecting the rule of law, and allocating resources for the most vulnerable people will in fact support our response to the pandemic by making our societies more equitable and resilient. Excellencies, as a global community, we are at the beginning of the largest socio-economic recovery since the creation of the United Nations. If properly planned and coordinated, our recovery has the potential to jump-start the STGs, accelerate action on resilient infrastructure, improve access to education and healthcare, and better protect the natural world around us. In 1945, skeptics thought that the idea of a multilateral system with an organization of unparalleled legitimacy at its core to be impossible. But even at that time of unimaginable tragedy, the world came together for the sake of humanity. I am sure we will be able to do that once again. Right now, we are all dreaming of the day this pandemic is over. Today, we can take a deep breath of fresh air without fear. Today, we can shake the hands of our colleagues, embrace our families, and laugh with our friends. After months of adjusting to life during this pandemic, it would be easy to feel frustrated. But do not be deterred. We are working for you. We are working for the refugees who are taking every precaution to protect their families in camp settings, working for the people with underlying conditions who are self-isolating at home, for the girls and boys who wish above all else to return to school, for the people in line waiting for COVID testing, and for those who do not have access to such diagnostics, for the healthcare workers who continue to work tirelessly on the forefront line, for the people battling the effects of the COVID-19 disease, and for the families around the world who are grieving the loss of their loved ones. The UN is working for you. We are united for you, straight strong. There are brighter days ahead. I thank you. Before proceeding further, I would like to invite members to stand and observe a minute of silence for all the victims of the coronavirus disease pandemic, including those in our United Nations family. I thank you. I now invite the Secretary-General of the United Nations, His Excellency Antonio Guterres, to make a statement, including in his role as Chair of the United Nations System Chief Executives Board for Coordination.
Mr. President, excellencies, ladies and gentlemen. It is an honour to address this General Assembly Special Session in response to the COVID-19 pandemic. Nearly a year into the pandemic, we face a human tragedy and a public health, humanitarian, and development emergency. For the first time since 1945, the entire world is confronted by a common threat, regardless of nationality, ethnicity, or face. But while COVID-19 does not discriminate, our efforts to prevent and contain it do. For that reason, the pandemic has hit the poorest and most vulnerable in our societies hardest. It is having a devastating impact on older people, on women and girls, on low-income communities, on the marginalized and isolated. It is presenting new threats to the 2030 Agenda and the Sustainable Development Goals. From the start, the World Health Organization provided factual information and scientific guidance that should have been the basis for a coordinated global response. Unfortunately, many of these recommendations were not followed, and in some situations there was a rejection of facts and an ignorance of the guidance. And when countries go in their own direction, the virus goes in every direction. The social and economic impact of the pandemic is enormous and growing. Thanks to the hard work and dedication of scientists and researchers from around the world, including those who are with us today, vaccines may become available within the next weeks and months. But let's not fool ourselves. A vaccine cannot undo damage that will stretch across years, even decades to come. Extreme poverty is rising, the threat of famine looms. We face the biggest global recession in eight decades, and these intergenerational impacts are not due to COVID-19 alone. They are the result of long-term fragilities, inequalities, and injustices that have been exposed by the pandemic. It's time to reset. As we build a strong recovery, we must seize the opportunity for change. Excellencies, since March, the United Nations system has focused its efforts on helping countries and avoid the worst impact of the pandemic while working for a strong recovery. We have mobilized our procurement and logistics operations to deliver medical equipment and supplies to 172 countries. A large-scale, coordinated, and comprehensive health response guided by the World Health Organization aims to suppress transmission of the virus, reduce mortality, and develop vaccines, diagnostics, and treatments that must be available to all. I have repeatedly called for a COVID-19 vaccine to be a global public good available to everyone, everywhere. The ACT Accelerated and its COVAX facility are the tools to get us there. But there is still a finance gap of $28 billion, including $4.3 billion urgently needed for the next two months. I thank those who have contributed and urge all to show your strong support. Beyond health, I appealed in March for a global ceasefire so that countries can focus on fighting the virus. I echoed this call in my speech to the General Assembly in September and urge new efforts and commitments to silence the guns by the end of the year. I am encouraged by the support this call has received from member states, regional organizations, armed movements, and civil society organizations. And I am also encouraged by the response to my call for peace in homes around the world and an end to violence against women and girls. As we mark the 16 days of action against gender-based violence, I urge governments to take concrete steps to make good on the commitments that were made. The United Nations is also strongly engaged in combating misinformation online. Our verified campaign provides compelling, trusted information while offering people tools to identify false content. Excellencies, the United Nations system is mobilized to support countries in addressing the devastating socioeconomic, humanitarian, and human rights aspects of this crisis. We have extended lifesaving assistance to 63 of the most vulnerable countries through our global humanitarian response plan. From the start, we have called for a stimulus package worth at least 10% of global GDP and for debt relief for all countries that need it. I welcome the steps that have been taken to help developing countries, but they are totally insufficient for the scale of this crisis. Many low- and middle-income developing countries need immediate support to avert a liquidity crisis. They are being forced to choose between providing basic services for their people or servicing their debts. The initiative we launched with the governments of Canada and Jamaica has developed policy options for financing the response to COVID-19 and putting us back on course to achieve these STGs. And this includes increasing resources available to the International Monetary Fund through a new allocation of special drawing rights to the benefit of developing countries and the voluntary reallocation of unused special drawing rights. I hope the G20 debt initiatives will be broadened so that all vulnerable developing countries are eligible, including middle-income countries that need debt relief. In the longer term, we need a reformed global architecture to enhance debt transparency and sustainability. I am pressing for these policies in all my global engagements, most recently at the G20. On the ground, our reformed United Nations country teams, led by a new generation of resident coordinators, and largely thanks to the impact of the reform, are being able to support governments in developing national response and recovery plans. Excellencies, looking ahead, the recovery from COVID-19 must address the pre-existing conditions it has exposed and exploited, from gaps in basic services to an overheated planet. Stronger health systems, universal health coverage must be a priority. Since 2007, the World Health Organization has declared six public health emergencies of international concern. COVID-19 will not be the last. We must apply the lessons learned if we are to meet the responsibilities to our children and grandchildren. Social safety nets must work for everyone to offer their faith precisely when they are needed most. A new social contract between people, governments, the private sector, civil society, and more can tackle the roots of inequality with fair taxation on income and wealth, universal benefits, and opportunities for all. As we launch economies, new investments must lay the groundwork for sustainable development and carbon neutrality in line with the 2030 Agenda and the Paris Agreement on Climate Change. We cannot be quith the broken planet and huge debts to future generations. The money we spend on recovery must go into building a greener, fairer future. And there are hopeful news on the climate front. A global coalition is taking shape for net zero emissions. By early next year, countries representing more than 65% of global carbon dioxide emissions are likely to have committed to carbon neutrality. And this sends a clear signal to markets, to investors, and to decision-makers. Act now to put a price on carbon, to end fossil fuel subsidies, to stop constructing new coal power plants, and to invest in resilient infrastructure. 2021 must be a leap year, the year of a quantum leap towards net zero emissions of greenhouse gases. And every country should enhance their nationally determined contributions well in advance of COP26 next November in Glasgow and in line with long-term goal of global carbon neutrality by 2050. An adaptation is an essential component of climate action. For least developed countries and small island developing states, it is an existential issue. I appeal to developed countries to fulfill their longstanding promise to provide $100 billion annually to support developing countries in reaching our shared climate goals. Early warning systems, climate resilient infrastructure, and agriculture can help avoid future losses while generating gains for biodiversity and other benefits for humankind. We cannot separate climate action from global well-being, particularly biodiversity. It's time to end the suicidal war with our planet. 2021 must be a year to address our planetary emergency. We need a post-2020 biodiversity framework to halt the extinction crisis to be established in Kunming, and we must see urgent action to protect and advance the health of the world's seas and oceans. Overfishing must stop, chemical and solid waste pollution, particularly plastics, must be drastically reduced. We must make peace with our planet if we are to live in balance with its incredible riches. Excellencies, as this difficulty draws to a close, let's resolve to take the tough, ambitious decisions and actions that will lead to better days ahead. In a global crisis, we must meet the expectations of those we serve with unity, solidarity, and coordinated multilateral global action. I call on you to take the opportunity of this special session of the General Assembly to confront the COVID-19 pandemic with the urgency it demands, to save lives and to build a better future together, and I thank you.
I thank the Secretary-General for his statement and for taking his time to be with us this morning. The Secretary-General will be leaving after the opening segment for another engagement. In accordance with Resolution 75-4, I now give the floor to His Excellency Minir Akram, Permanent Representative for Pakistan, to the United Nations and President of the Economic and Social Council.
I thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President of the General Assembly, distinguished Secretary-General, Mr. President of the Security Council, Your Excellency Chair of the Movement of Non-Aligned Countries, excellencies, ladies and gentlemen. I am honored to be able to speak to the General Assembly's Special Session in response to the coronavirus disease pandemic. The crisis triggered by the COVID-19 is a health crisis, an economic crisis, and above all, a humanitarian crisis. Global infections have reached 65 million. One and a half million people have died. We have lost one of our own, Ambassador Toure, the Shajjais Affairs of Guinea. I would like to take this opportunity to express my deepest condolences to his family and the government of Guinea. The economic statistics are equally devastating. A global economic contraction of nearly 5%. Over 60 developing countries need urgent financial help. Five countries have defaulted on debt payments. Twenty countries face acute food security and scarcity. Over 300 million jobs lost. 100 million people pushed back into extreme poverty. Excellencies, confronted by this monumental crisis, the world's response must be equally bold. We must first ensure that a vaccine against the virus becomes available to everyone, everywhere, rich or poor, man or woman, on an equitable basis. Those who are the most at risk, health workers, the ill and infirm, women and children, must receive priority. Advanced purchase agreements for the virus must not be allowed to undermine our collective commitment to equity in vaccine distribution. A collective global commitment to the COVAX and the CTAP facility is indispensable. Governments must also commit to transparency in all matters related to the production, distribution, and fair pricing of the vaccine. Second, each government should be encouraged to respond to the people's needs. As the Managing Director of the IMF has advised, countries should spend as much as needed to keep their people alive and their economies afloat. It is evident that the developing countries do not have the fiscal space to finance a recovery from the pandemic. I may mention that later in this session, the Prime Minister of Pakistan, Mr. Imran Khan, will propose an emergency plan will propose an emergency plan for financial support to the developing countries. If there is an economic collapse or a humanitarian disaster in the developing countries, it will halt a global economic recovery, and the achievement of the SDGs will turn into a shimer. Excellencies, in deploying resources, governments and international institutions must put people first. No one should be left behind. To lift millions out of poverty and build resilience in our societies, investments in sustainable infrastructure will be vital. Science and technology must be deployed in building back better. Research and development objectives, the international patent regime, and the digitalization of economies should be aligned with the SDGs and climate objectives. I am confident that this special session will contribute significantly to the achievement of these important objectives. Mr. President, I am also confident that ECOSOC, through its forthcoming forum on financing for development next April, the Forum on Science and Technology and Innovation in May, and the High Level Political Forum in July will complement and advance the deliberations and outcomes of this special session to build resilient structures that can recover from the COVID crisis, achieve the SDGs, and prevent a climate catastrophe. Mr. President, this is a time for the expression of international solidarity. This is a time for us to turn our nice words into concrete and specific actions. I thank you, sir.
I thank the President of the Economic and Social Council for his statement. Before proceeding further, I have been informed that there is no statement by the President of the Security Council. In accordance with Resolution 75/4, I now give the floor to the distinguished representative of Azerbaijan to introduce the prerecorded statement by the Chair of Movement of Non-Aligned Countries.
Mr. President, distinguished heads of state and government, ladies and gentlemen. I have the honor to deliver this statement on behalf of 120 member states...
Mr. President? There has been a technical difficulty. We're solving it.
I thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, I have the distinct honor and privilege to introduce prerecorded statement by His Excellency Ilham Eidaroglu Aliyev, President of the Republic of Azerbaijan, in his capacity as the Chairman of the Movement of Non-Aligned Countries. I thank you.
Mr. President, distinguished heads of state and government, ladies and gentlemen. I have the honor to deliver this statement on behalf of 120 member states of the Non-Aligned Movement. As we mark the 75th anniversary of the United Nations, which remains a central multilateral forum for addressing pressing global issues and challenges, we note with regret the emergence of many new areas of concern. These concerns necessitate the renewal of our collective commitment to the values of multilateralism and international cooperation, which underpin the Charter of the United Nations and the 2030 Agenda for Sustainable Development. A good testament of this was overwhelming support by the UN member states for the initiative to convene the Special Session of the UN General Assembly in response to COVID-19 pandemic put forward by the Non-Aligned Movement. It constitutes, among others, the remarkable success for the member states of NAMM since this year also marks the 65th anniversary of the adoption of Bandung Declaration, which envisaged the promotion of international cooperation for the common prosperity and well-being of all. In this connection, I would like to express on behalf of the movement our sincere gratitude for the support extended by the UN member states and the President of the General Assembly. Throughout 2020, the global community has faced the greatest health crisis in recent history, with almost 60 million reported cases and more than 1 million deaths worldwide as of today, resulting in multifaceted repercussions in health, social, economic, and financial spheres, causing disruption of societies and economies as well as to global commerce and travel and making a devastating impact on the livelihood of people. With the aim to contributing the global efforts in addressing the unprecedented universal impact of the pandemic and to find out possible ways to provide a prompt, adequate, and inclusive assistance to the member states of the Non-Aligned Movement, Azerbaijan, as the Chair of the Movement, convened the online summit-level meeting of the NAMM contact group in response to COVID-19 under the theme "United Against COVID-19" on May 4, 2020. As a practical outcome of this meeting, the member states of the Movement decided to establish the task force in response to COVID-19 and to work out a database on the basic humanitarian and medical needs and requirements of NAMM member states in their fight against COVID-19. We are pleased to know that the World Health Organization uses the NAMM database as one of its reference points for identifying the existing needs of NAMM member states in addressing the pandemic. The Non-Aligned Movement praises the activities of the United Nations system in response to the COVID-19. We commend strong leadership of the Secretary-General, who played a central role in spearheading the United Nations' global response to the pandemic while at the same time ensuring continuity of operations of the UN Secretariat. The Movement fully supports the WHO and its leadership in their critical role in providing guidance, training, equipment, and concrete lifesaving services in order to ensure effective response of the international community to the ever-increasing challenges posed by the COVID-19 pandemic. The pandemic has exposed and aggravated vulnerabilities and inequalities in both developing and developed countries, and also among them deepening poverty and exclusion and pushing the most vulnerable even further behind. It is the poorest and most vulnerable who were hit hardest by this pandemic, and NAMM is gravely concerned that the further impact of the crisis will reverse hard-won development gains and hamper progress towards achieving the Sustainable Development Goals. We also note with concern that the outbreak of the COVID-19 pandemic further exacerbated existing fundamental impediments, which most recently were addressed during the 18th NAMM Summit in 2019 in Baku, such as impact of global financial and economic crisis, continuing lack of resources and underdevelopment of the majority of the developing world, continuing unequal terms of trade and lack of cooperation from developed countries, the coercive and unilateral measures imposed by some of them, as well as use of force or threats of use of force in the way towards a just and equitable world order. NAMM stresses the importance of affordable, unhindered, and equitable access by all countries to medicines, vaccines, and medical equipment, which should constitute an integral part of a coordinated and effective global response to COVID-19. As many vaccines against COVID-19 are being currently studied, we are all looking forward to the successful outcome of clinical trials and hope that a safe and effective vaccine will soon be available and that they will be considered as global public goods ensuring the universal distribution at affordable prices for all. We appreciate the coordination efforts of WHO in this process and stress the importance of this organization in facilitating equitable access of people throughout the globe to such vaccine once it is available. Mr. President, it is through a coordinated and concerted global response based on unity, multilateral cooperation, solidarity, and respect for human rights that the international community can craft strategies to mitigate effects of COVID-19 and recover from the pandemic, which currently continues to spread. This special session will serve broad objectives, such as reaffirming and strengthening commitment to international cooperation and multilateralism, highlighting best practices as well as challenges to UN member states in responding to the pandemic and reflecting on the central position of the United Nations through providing an opportunity for open and transparent discussions among member states, observer states, observers, relevant UN agencies and bodies, and other stakeholders. We look forward to fruitful deliberations throughout this session. Thank you.
I thank the Chair of the Movement of Non-Aligned Countries for his statement. We have heard the last speaker for the opening segment of this special session. Before proceeding to the consideration of Agenda Item 7, entitled "General Debate", I should like, in keeping with the established practice, to invite the attention of the General Assembly to Document A/S31/2/Adendum I concerning Article 19 of the Charter. May I take it that the General Assembly duly takes note of the information contained in this document? It is so decided. In that connection, may I further take it that it is the wish of the General Assembly to follow the provisions of Resolution 75/2, by which the Comoros, Sao Tomo and Principe, and Somalia are permitted to vote in the General Assembly until the end of its 75th session and to also allow these member states to vote at the 31st Special Session? It is so decided. The Assembly will begin its consideration of Agenda Item 7, entitled "General Debate". As members are aware, the Assembly, in its Resolution 75/4, decided, without setting a precedent for future Special Sessions of the General Assembly, each member state, observer state, and the European Union, as well as representatives from relevant organizations attending this Special Session, can submit a prerecorded statement by their heads of state, of government, head of delegation, or other dignitary, which will be played in the General Assembly Hall during the General Debate of the Special Session after introduction by their representative, who is physically present in the Assembly Hall. In this regard, I would like to address important organizational matters pertaining to the conduct of the plenary meeting. Introduction of the prerecorded statements will be made by the representatives from their national seats. Due to time constraints, it is expected that the introductory remarks will be kept concise. Statements delivered by the representatives who are physically present in the Assembly Hall will also be made from the national seats. As set out in the Resolution 75/4, statements in the General Debate will be limited to five minutes for individual delegations and seven minutes for statements made on behalf of a group of states. In the case of prerecorded statements, introductory remarks and length of the video itself shall be counted in the allocated time limit. In accordance with Resolution 75/4, without setting a precedent for future Special Sessions of the General Assembly, in addition to the verbatim records, the President of the General Assembly will circulate as a document of the Assembly a compilation document of the statements delivered by heads of state and government or other dignitaries by means of prerecorded statements during the Special Session and submitted to the President no later than the day on which the prerecorded statement is played in the Assembly Hall. Submissions in this regard should be made to a statement at un.org. Addressed by... I now give the floor to the distinguished representative of the European Union to introduce an address by the President of the European Council.
Mr. President, I have the honor to introduce the prerecorded statement by His Excellency Mr. Charles Michel, President of the European Council.
Excellences, Mesdames et Messieurs, Tout d'abord, mes remerciements au Secrétaire Général Anthony Guterres pour avoir pris cette initiative de convoquer un sommet extraordinaire sur le COVID-19. Les Nations Unies sont naturellement le lieu de rassemblement de toutes les forces positives et c'est donc par excellence cet espace où nous devons ensemble tenter de tirer les leçons de cette épreuve pour dessiner les plans afin de nous en sortir plus solides à l'avenir. Et je voudrais être pragmatique et lancer une proposition concrète. Le nombre des épidémies...